Callum?
Here.
Kupczynski?
Here.
Coburn?
Here.
Okay, Anne Johnson and Sykes are both excused. Okay, thank you. All right, we have a proclamation this evening that I'll read for you. This one is Albany, Oregon, General Aviation Appreciation Month for August 2017. Whereas the City of Albany, Oregon has a significant interest in the continued vitality of general aviation, aviation education institutions, aviation organizations, and community airports. And whereas, general aviation and the Albany Airport have an immense economic impact on the City of Albany. And whereas, Albany has a special connection to air history, especially in the 1880s, when Henry L. Flint was the first to launch a steam-powered airplane on the American continent. The 1890s had the first hot air balloons in the Willamette Valley. In 1908, Albany's John C. Burkhart was the first man born west of the Mississippi to achieve a successful flight. In 1910, John Burkhart built the first airplane in the Pacific Rim to achieve a successful flight. In 1920, Colonel Charlie Langmac founded the Albany Airport, the first airport in Oregon that is still in use, and the only airport in Oregon on the National Historic Register. And whereas, the City of Albany Airport is the primary airport in the City of Albany for training of new pilots, general aviation supporter, and numerous aviation enthusiasts. And whereas, general aviation not only supports Oregon's economy, but it also improves overall quality of life by supporting emergency medical and healthcare services, law enforcement, firefighting, and disaster relief, and transporting business and recreational travelers to their destination quickly and safely. And whereas, the nation's aviation infrastructure represents an important public benefit, and stable funding is essential for the overall system. Now therefore, I, Sharon Canopa, Mayor of City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim August 2017 as Albany, Oregon, General Aviation Appreciation Month. And hereby proclaim, general aviation is a vital strategic resource to the City of Albany and the State of Oregon. And witness wherea, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 26th day of July 2017. I don't know if we have anyone here from our Airport Commission. I don't believe I see any this evening, so... So we do with the city, we do have appointed members for Albany Airport Commission. So they do oversee the policy issues and infrastructure needs for the Albany Airport. So, okay, thank you folks. Okay, and next, we have business from the public, and I think we have quite a bit of folks here this evening, so I want to welcome all of you. But also, I think there was a couple people that told me that they wanted to speak, and one was Reverend Tim Graves, and also Nancy Greenman. Was there anyone else that was planning to? Yes, sir, you were too? Okay, was it over the Human Resource Commission ordinance that was proposed, or is it a different subject?
The Human Rights Commission.
Yes, Relations Commission.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Was there anyone else that was wanting to speak? Yes, ma'am, you too? And now, was it over the same topic? Okay, so is there anyone here that wants to speak not on that topic? Okay, all right. Okay, so does Nancy or the Reverend want to begin first? Is Nancy still here? I don't see her. Yeah, okay. Or Nancy, is she here?
Here.
Oh, she's back there, okay. Yeah, didn't see you there. Okay, all right. So you'll need to state your name and furnish your address, and then if it's a challenging last name, please spell it for us. Thank you.
Well, sometimes it's a challenging last name.
Okay.
My name is Tim Graves. I live at 1910 Geary Street Southeast, and I've asked my co-master to also join me.
My name is Douglas Anne Cartwright, C-A-R-T-W-R-I-G-H-T, and my address is 3517 Hill Street, 971-97322.
Okay, thank you.
We are here because we're really grieved by the decision of the council two weeks ago. We're really outraged by the implication of the decision, because what it does, as people of faith, what it tells us is that those, that not all are created in the image of the divine, in the image of God. We're grieved that the council majority's failure to see the image of the divine within our neighbors neglects the idea, the understanding that harmony only protects those with privilege and those with power.
We are also deeply grieved at the council majority's failure to affirm lived experiences of people facing bigotry and hatred in their daily lives, not isolated incidents, but lived experiences.
As faithful people, we are called to stand with those whose lived experiences in Albany are not harmonious, but who are subject to bigotry and hatred.
Voting to retain harmony while doing nothing to seek full inclusion of those who shared their lived experiences is to fail to affirm the image of the divine within neighbor and stranger.
For us, the Bible is an authority, and the arc of the biblical witness moves, the people move from a sense of exclusion to inclusion. But even in the most exclusive portions, God expects the people to welcome the stranger, to care for the widow, to care for the orphan. The council majority, in our opinion, turned their backs on the image of God within our neighbors and instead opted for the status quo.
When we call for harmony in the face of oppression and hatred of others, as you heard from so many people last city council meeting, only helps the powerful. We, you as city council, we as pastors, we as community of Albany, must work toward full inclusion to live into a community where all are welcome.
In the Hebrew scriptures, the prophet Micah says, "God has told you, human one, what is good and what is required from you: to do justice, to embrace faithful love, and walk humbly with your God." The prophet Micah was one of the scriptures of Jesus. So this is part of the Christian tradition, the Jewish tradition, and it is also part of other traditions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And for your information too, if some of you weren't here at the last council meeting, so the council gave direction to have kind of a joint work session with our Human Relations Commission, so we are working on setting a date for that. We were hoping for August 8, and it looks like there could be tentative September 12, but I did get word there is a council that can't make it or two, so we're still going to come up with that date, and we will, it'll be out as a public notice too for when that date's set, and everyone's welcome too to attend that meeting, so, yeah. Okay, Nancy?
My name is Nancy Greenman. I live on Southwest 12th Avenue, and I prefer just not to give my street number at this time. I do live in Albany, I think many of you know that. And I wanted to follow up on one thing that came up at last, at the last council meeting. At that meeting, one of the speakers described relevant training that her agency provides, and I think said that the agency would make council members welcome to participate in that training. So it got me thinking about what kind of training might be available for people to come together, to spend some time thinking about these issues, and maybe learning to develop new perspectives. I know that in the past 15 years that I've been in this community, I've had the opportunity to participate in trainings and awareness events that have to do with unconscious bias and privileged discrimination. And one of them, in fact, one of the best that I've ever been to, was provided by the Human Relations Commission, facilitated by trainers from Oregon State University, and it was an intergenerational conversation that included students from middle school up through senior citizens, even people older than me. So knowing that these are topics and skills that are widely seen as foundational in public and private organizations, I was pretty sure that that training would be available probably through the city as well as community organizations for the council, and I thought it might be useful to put a list together and share it with you. So I want to thank Marilyn Smith and David Shaw, the manager of Human Relations and the Public Information Officer, as well as Audra Baca from KidCo Head Start. And I'm just briefly going to run down what it is I found, and then I'm going to leave this with you, and I can email it to you if that's easier. So through the city, the City of Albany, I learned, belongs to the partnership, Employers' Partnership for Diversity, along with the City of Corvallis, Oregon State University, the Corvallis School District, and other governmental agencies. And it's a cooperative and provides training on topics that proposed for the coming year: bullying, harassment, LGBTQ inclusion in the workplace, religion, immigration, and unconscious bias. I also, and I should have known, because it's right on the agenda we all get, that Albany's vision is to be a vital and diverse community, and that the city has a conversation with all employees, at least annually, about the mission and the value of being a diverse and humane organization and community. And that, in addition, that the city has an excellent anti-harassment and discrimination policy, and does training on that too. And my understanding is that while the council perhaps has not participated, council members would be welcome to participate in those trainings, and that could be arranged. The League of Oregon Cities that I know people participate in has, also provides online training. Last year, or during this past year, they provided harassment, equal employment, and other laws that matter. And as far as community organizations, I know that both KidCo Head Start and Consortium for Community Services, CSC, have trainings that would be relevant and that are coming up. So I will leave this information with you. I want to say one more thing, and that is, when I was thinking about coming forward and saying this to you, I realized that while all of us would eagerly agree that learning is wonderful, and we are in favor of it, all of us have also experienced that we like to learn by our own choice and at our own time, and not when somebody tells us that we should. Nevertheless, I wanted to share this with you. I know right now that this conversation among us is charged, but I also know that we're all here for the same common goal, our commitment to making this the most wonderful city possible. And I hope that the future will bring us opportunities to continue to talk and work and learn together. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Okay, let's see, I think the young lady in the second row, in the pink?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Sean Marie Frenchburn, and that's a difficult last name, so it's F-R-E-N-C-H-dash-B-Y-R-N-E. And I live on Sixth Street, Sixth and Ninth. And first of all, I just want to thank Mayor Canopa for facilitating and for declaring last week Pride Week in Albany, Oregon. It's something that's really close to my heart, because I've lived in Albany since I was six years old, and I realized I was a lesbian when I was about 11 or 12. And hearing and reading about this city council's decision, and their decision to not include diversity and inclusion in the Human Rights or Human Resources Committee in Albany, really hurt me, and it made me think about how much, I mean, I'm really lucky in the sense that I have a family that supports me, and I have, for the most part, a community that supports me, but I've grown up with a lot of other people in Albany, Oregon. And I was up for it last weekend with a couple of my friends, and we've all kind of grown up and realized similar things about ourselves. But some of them don't live in families that support them that much, and some of them don't live in close communities or religious communities that support them. And when your greater community, when your city also doesn't want to support you, or declares that it doesn't want to think about the difficulties of examining its own biases, or the biases of the community, or the biases of just American society as a whole, or just human nature as a whole, it's really hurtful, and it's really impactful, especially to people who identify as LGBT, or people who are people of color, who are young, like me, or people who are still in high school. And I just also want to say that there's a lot of, the previous speaker talked about unconscious bias, and I think there's a lot of that just in society and in every one of us, and it's not something that we have to stigmatize so much, as we have to recognize that it's there, look at ourselves and realize that we all have moments of being racist, we all have moments of being homophobic, we all have moments of exhibiting the biases that our society raises us with. We have to look at those and critically think about them. And the last thing I want to say is that I think as, it was really, I don't know, I don't, can't think of a word, but it was really hurtful, I suppose, to see that people of color and people who identify as LGBT were presenting their experiences to the council, and they were being told that things like homophobia and racism don't exist in Albany or don't exist. Just because you yourself may not be racist or may not be homophobic doesn't mean that it's not an attitude that exists in the community as a whole, and to speak over people of color or people who identify as LGBT and tell them that their experiences with racism and homophobia and other prejudice isn't real is something that's non-productive and hurtful to the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize for not recognizing you. I remember just that little girl in the community with your mom and your parents, and we're down at the concerts, and now you're in college. Yes, time flies, so, yeah, thank you. So, okay, and then, sir, you wanted to come up?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Samuel Benjamin Theodore Sacks. I haven't said that since I graduated. I do not live in Albany, but I used to live in Albany. I was, went to grade school, junior high, high school. I went to South Albany High School, not West, and I was a rebel. The reason I'm here today is because Albany, although I was born in Portland, and I live in Portland now, Albany's always been a home. It's been my home, it's where I grew up, it's where I was a child and grew to be a man, and then I went in the United States Army, and I went to college, played football. And now I live in Portland, and my life, my life's work is committed to ending hate and racism in not only Portland, but in our state. I'm the founder of the No Hate Zone, and I work every day of my life to end hate and racism, to try to educate people, education, community engagement, and also advocate, activism, agitator, whatever A you want to use. And when I grew up here, there was a city of 28,000, and I didn't see much discrimination or racism, because there weren't many people that didn't look like us, right? Most of the people that lived here were white, Christian, and as one of the very few Jewish people and families, we didn't see much hatred. And when people ask me why I do the work I do, I say, well, I grew up and I never saw it, right? I didn't understand until I went into the real world. Now I understand it, and now I see it. And I served as a Human Rights Commissioner for the City of Portland for two years, I was a chair of the Community and Police Relations Committee, and a few things I wanted to share with you today is that, you know, I was a kid who grew up here and went to a school whose mascot was the Confederate flag, and it flew in the gymnasium for years, I mean, 20 years, I think. I never realized the significance of what that flag meant and how it impacted black people. I used to run around with that flag at track meets and football games and with pride. And now I don't have any pride in that mascot, and I don't have any pride in that flag, I understand. And that's the important thing, is that when you get to that place of realization and understanding how your actions and your words can affect and impact people, if you don't do something to change it and to act on it, then you're just as guilty as everybody else that perpetuates racism and bigotry and continues to oppress people and support a system that does that. As a Human Rights Commissioner in Portland, I can tell you that our job was to advocate for people that are marginalized, people of color, you name it, and be a voice for those people. The terms diversity, inclusion, equity, those are not new terms. They have nothing to do with, their existence today has nothing to do with Black Lives Matter in the sense that they're not code words for Black Lives Matter. They were in existence long before Black Lives Matter. And I won't even get into that, that whole issue about Black Lives Matter, because that's a much deeper issue to try to explain to you why Black Lives Matter exists. I was very disheartened, I was sad, I was a little angry to hear the things that came from this council, came from the city, because it's not what I remember. And I don't think it was, maybe it's not your intention or your hope to sound like a bigot or sound like a racist, but that's what came out. That's what was received by not only myself, but many people. You know, this story was covered in the Washington Times. This isn't just a local issue, this is a national issue. People across the country, everywhere, are looking to Albany right now and saying, what's going on? Why do they not understand that, you know, equity, inclusion, those aren't new words? Those are things that people have been talking for a long time. So I came here today to, you know, as other people have said, to be a resource. You know, through the No Hate Zone, I can connect you with people that can do training. You can come up probably to Portland and see how the Human Rights Commission operates there and what their role is. They do advise the city on policies and suggest things. When I was the chair of the Community and Police Relations Committee, we worked closely with the police to, in racial profiling, we suggested to the police things that they could do differently, and now I work closely with the police as well. So I don't want to take up a lot of time. I'm saddened, and I don't know that, you know, I don't think it's the expectation that that's the message you wanted to deliver, but it is the message that you delivered, that people of color are not welcome in Albany, Oregon. And I hear this from people that I associate with, that have friends and family in Portland. It's kind of what Albany has been known about or known for, and I tell them, no, that's not what Albany is about, that's not what I saw, right? But now it's being, it's difficult for me to say those things now, and that saddens me, and I hope it saddens you, and I hope you'll take in strong consideration that you should change your vote, you should go back and put inclusion, equity, diversity into the words. You should do what the Human Relations Committee is advising you, because they are the ones that are given the responsibility of educating all of us as to what we need to do different and better to move, to move forward. And it's really not our place, as white men and women, to say, no, you don't know what you're talking about, that's not right. That is, again, supporting and encouraging the systematic racism that has been in place for years, and we cannot allow that to happen anymore. I came all the way from Portland today to be here to speak and to say, kind of as an old friend, hey, you know, you probably should change some things, and I hope that you will take my words to heart, they're not, and it comes from a place of hate or anger or anything like that. I love this city, and I always will. I grew up here, and I think you can do better, and I hope that you will work to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks, and trust me, it is not our reflection on our community, so it's just been one action, but as you can see, this is our community here, and Albany is a very caring and loving community. And so your old hometown is still the same, we are caring, and I was a rebel too, so, but I think I was way earlier than you were, so. And yeah, and actually, I was part of the class from the early years of South Albany that we did vote for the Confederate flag, because we never thought about anything like that back then, so. So, yeah, I was a part of that, early years of the, voting for that flag, so, but, yeah, it's, how would we know? Yeah, but thank you, so welcome to Albany. Okay, anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, Scott? And then I see a hand there.
My name is Scott Lawley, L-A-W-L-E-Y, and I live at 528 Second Avenue, Southwest, Apartment Number One. And it amazes me just how words escape me, so I haven't really got anything else to say, except just again to go on the record that I am in favor of the changes to the charter to the Human Relations Committee, that's all. And I thank you very much for the opportunity to sit here before you and do that.
All right, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Scott, it's nice to see you. We email back and forth, but I don't think we ever met, so.
No, yes, you don't hear from me.
Good to see you.
Scott. Yes, ma'am, yeah.
Hi again. My name is Audra Baca, B-A-C-A. I live at 1804 Northwest Olivia Circle. And so I wasn't going to speak today, but I got inspired. All of this reminded me of a recent event I had at work where we, as nonprofit social workers, came together with healthcare clinical people, and we discovered we were all using the same words and realized we were all thinking of a different definition for them. So we were saying words like "social worker" and "health advocate" and things like that, and people had no idea that we did not actually picture the same things. So I wanted to just clear a couple things up really quick, and define some of those words that are those hot topics right now. So inclusion is accepting everybody as a fellow human being. It doesn't mean that you have to accept their behavior, but it does mean that you have to accept them as a human that has the same basic needs as you. So food, water, shelter, a sense of self, healthy relationships, and a healthy community that supports them. Equity is recognizing that getting those needs met looks different for everybody, and having an equitable community means that the community supports that everybody needs a different way to get their needs met. Diversity is celebrating, so not just acknowledging, but celebrating that we're different, and then not fearing those differences or using that fear to oppress, or not using misconceptions to oppress. And privilege is when you feel oppressed by somebody else asking for equality. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Audra. Okay, I think that was it that I saw for hands. Okay? Ask a question, yeah, you'll just need to come up front so that, yeah, sorry. It's kind of one reason we talked last, but when it comes to, you know, kind of folks wanting to weigh in on a conversation... wanting to weigh in on a conversation, it has to be picked up off that tape too, so it's always, you know, important to be able to be up at the microphone, so.
So my name is Lisa Walker. I live up in North Albany, 2917 Valley Drive. And the question I had is, I was the last city councillor, I mean, I spoke, and through reflecting on that process, I realized it was two one-way conversations. The audience spoke to you, and then you spoke to us, but there was no engagement? Technically. And I wanted to know if any of you had questions for us?
Yeah.
You know?
And let me, yeah.
And I don't know how that works.
Right. So let me explain the process too, which, which is good, because I know I did see where some folks were kind of not being able, you know, they wanted to be able to weigh in on that conversation. So our meetings are business meetings, they're not a town hall meeting or like a debate forum. So what we do is we take sort of the testimony, it's sort of like a hearing. As we've been told over and over by our city attorney, we're like the judges, so over issues. So when it comes to the meetings and we, we receive the testimony, just like a judge does, once your testimony is closed, then you deliberate. So if we had allowed, say, as many folks that were here last time, to want to weigh in on when it comes to deliberation, how do you control that? You would have several conversations going, and then you get the dialogue back and forth. It's not productive, you know, and it's not, it's not real constructive too. So it's where we receive, you know, the testimony, and we listen. Yes, we listen, and some people, you know, feel like way, way decisions are that we don't listen, but we do listen. It's just, you know, not everybody will agree with what they heard too, so that's just a part of the process. But when it comes to the deliberation, we can't take in more, you know, input from citizens, or then, how do you choose? You can't just have one, then you have to open it up to everyone. Then, then you would end up never being able to reach towards that decision, so. You know, we're, we're welcome to have like a town hall, if somebody wanted to, I'm welcome to show up for any event and be able to have that dialogue. I know councillors would, you know, be willing to show up, as we do, we get invited to many events and then show up when somebody has, you know, questions that they want to be able to ask, you know, ask the city, so.
So are the councilmen allowed to ask the person testifying questions? Could you guys ask the person from the Republic Center?
Oh, yeah, and we do that all the time too. So if there's something that, you know, needs to be clarified, councillors do, you know, asked, ask for clarification. So that happens on many issues, on that.
So any of you have questions for me? Because I'll gladly answer. If you don't remember what I spoke about, I spoke about my truth and what it's like to be a lesbian in this community, and would like to raise a dollar, then I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. And I would hope that you have questions.
Yeah. No? So.
That's the, that's the only.
Well, and I'd like to add, I don't have any specific questions for you, Lisa, but after the vote, two weeks ago, I made it very clear that I'd like to see council get together with the Human Relations Commission, because, believe it or not, they have, they did not bring the information to us for just discussion, they just said, you know, "Here it is." And we've never had that opportunity to really sit down and talk with them. And several people, I know Scott and I have emailed and others, I don't have a problem with, with the words, you know, diversity and, and equity and, and, I don't have it in front of me.
Inclusion.
Inclusion, thank you. I just wanted the, the three words that they struck in the community to be left in. I haven't had a chance to talk, I did talk to Javier, I was at the, the parade last Saturday and bumped into him and had a chance to talk to him about that. But for me, what I feel we really need is, is some communication. We need to get together and, and talk with the folks that are on the Human Relations Commission. So as the mayor mentioned, we talked Monday and it looked like August 8th would work for council. Turns out it won't work for Human Relations Commission, so, you know, we'll, we'll go back and forth and find a date. But I'm looking for dialogue, I'm optimistic, you know, we can find a, some common ground and, and a solution. It's just a matter for me of, of having that dialogue and that opportunity to communicate with them.
I, I'm glad you said that, because the impression I got the last time I was here, I have a verbal memory, so please forgive me, but was it you that quoted the, the National Anthem?
Pledge of Legions?
Pledge of Legions. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. And the impression I got from what you said and the vote you cast was that harmony, that word harmony was more important to you, and that you didn't acknowledge the value of those three words. And that was really hard to take, and I think it was hard to take for good people in this room. So to hear that you want that dialogue is valuable. From what I understand, you'd had a work group prior, and those, that language had been discussed.
No. That's the issue.
Well, I think there was also a personal agenda that was very disconcerting to me, but I'm glad to hear that those discussions can happen, because I do believe that people in this community need that language, because it starts with the language. And you move from there, if you never give people the words to use, they don't know how to progress. And that's the education process. You have to start somewhere. So I look forward to seeing those changes, and I will, I will be standing individual, I will be taking my lunches and my time to, to tell you how important that is, so I appreciate hearing. Anybody else have any questions for me?
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you. I, I also, I'd take this opportunity is, is to also kind of clarify, clarify our overall rules of conduct for the meeting when it came to clapping. I think some folks were kind of, you know, wondering why do we not allow clapping? So, and so you kind of put yourself in a situation if you were on the opposite side of, say, the majority in a room. It can be very intimidating to go up and speak when you know you're really upsetting the majority of the folks in the room. So it's sort of out of just respecting everyone's, everyone's opinion, because, you know, whether we agree with them or not, they have the right to speak, and everyone should have the right to speak, and we want them to feel comfortable and welcome when they come to address their city government. So that's a part of why our rules have always been in place about no clapping. And I think it, what happened, some of the folks that were on the outer edge didn't hear that when I mentioned that two weeks ago, so, you know, it was difficult for them to know that was a rule when they came in a little bit late and didn't, didn't hear that part, but. I have been kind of that recipient of, of, you know, testified on statewide bills, and I remember one time, there was one that was up in Salem, that it was a very poorly written bill, and many cities were against it, but I was the only, the room was packed, and I was the only one in opposition that went up, the only one representing the city, and there was four lobbyists, but all the folks were from Portland and Eugene, and boy, were they mad when I started testifying. And I was not comfortable, and I even had one of our lieutenants with me, and he was not comfortable in that room either. And, and I actually, after I testified, stayed a bit, and I left, I said, "I did not want to be kind of challenged by the folks." So, so I know what it's like when you're kind of on the minority in, when it comes to certain issues. So you want everyone to feel comfortable, they have the right to voice their opinion, that's our democracy. So what we can do to try to make, you know, folks to be able to feel, feel welcome and be able to voice their opinion, and that's what we have done for many years here in Albany, is we've always wanted everyone to be welcome, we don't give time limits like almost all governments do, we want people to feel comfortable in coming up and address their, their local government and your city, so. Thank you for letting me have that opportunity to clarify that, so. Okay, I think that was it that I saw for hands on that, so. Or Tom, did you have something? Okay?
Not supposed to touch the mic, right?
Right.
I'll try to stand up halfway. Name is Tom Cordier, live in North Albany. I was not here two weeks ago when, when all the excitement happened, but I've read about it, and I've talked to people about it, and what happened, and I was not surprised that the council voted the way it did, nor was I disappointed at the way the council voted. I've read the blogs and read the newspaper coverage on letters to the editor, and a lot of those letters were highly defamatory toward the council, and I don't appreciate that. One particular phrase that I read was that the people that wanted the language changed said that they wanted to protect the unserved in our community. I don't know who the unserved are. I'm an old white guy, and, but I've been around the world, served four years in the The only unserved group that I know of, they fall into two groups. One are the mentally ill, and they are highly unserved in our community, because generally they are homeless. The system that we have for mental health treats them as totally capable individuals, and they're not. The mental health people schedule meetings for them with professionals, knowing that they won't keep those appointments, because they have no ability to record where the, what, when the appointment was made. They, they live on the street, they live under the bridges, they live down by the river, they live in the, in the sunken valleys of our community. The judicial system puts them in jail. When they get out, they have no identity, no ability to buy medicines. The system never enrolls them in Cover, Oregon. They don't have identity cards, they have nothing. And the system treats them as if they're normal. When, when I get an appointment for my dentist, they give me a card, and I take it home and I put it on my desk, and I tell my wife, and so I have ways of remembering that stuff. Well, the 23-year-old that I befriended for a year had the card, but he had, he, he lived under a bridge, had no ability to keep the appointment, so when his, when his date for parole would happen, he didn't show. Drive around and try to find him, can't find him. When he, when it's a mental health meeting, they say, "Well, he didn't show, I guess, nothing we can do." So they're highly unserved, and it, and it's not an easy problem, and I understand that. And the recidivism rate of drug users going back and forth, this young fellow that I was with, his first name was Travis, he'd been in the county jail 10 times. So he was just going through the merry-go-round and living on the street in between times, okay? And so he would get back into drugs, and it's a terrible mess. So they are, they are unserved, and they're being left out of this conversation. The second group that is unserved are the unborn. A political party in this state encourages females to kill their own children. They give them free abortions, on demand, anytime, anyplace, anytime during the gestation period, with absolutely no restrictions. And that's a terrible thing for our state to embrace. And those two groups are underserved, and it's a shame. And I would, I, I bring those two groups up, because I personally believe that a lot of people look for slights. I mean, I've heard people say, "Well, I'm, I'm black, a black person, and, and I was in an elevator, and the lady that I stood next to changed her purse to the other side of her, to her other arm, and she only did that because I'm black." Well, guess what? I'm white, and, and I've had that happen to me, many times. And so some people look for grievances, and I would ask that people get away from that. And I'm for diversity, I, I embrace all cultures, I've traveled the world, and so, on balance, I think the two groups that are underserved need to be, my purpose here today is to elevate their positions so that we become aware of their situations. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Tom. Okay, I think that was it, so, yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Clarissa Morin-Fadis, and I was here last week too. I live on 728 Montgomery Street, Southeast. And I could sit here and give a thousand of examples of how people in this community experience inequities and issues regarding diversity and inclusion, but I am not, because you had 85 minutes of that two weeks ago, and you had probably a half an hour or a little bit over that now. So I just want to say that I want to reinforce the people that mentioned training, and I am part of the Lean Banon Health Equity Alliance, and we are organizing a training in Albany on September 15th in partnership with Upstream Public Health, and it will be a community health advocacy training. And I would encourage some of you to attend, whether you want to be part of a panel to talk to people, or whether you just want to attend. And the reason why is, if there is something that anyone in community organizing can tell you right now, is that in the last six months, more and more people are getting involved. People want to know how legislation gets made, they want to know who the representatives are, they want to call them and email them, they want to do things. And if you don't give them an opportunity to interact with you, you're either missing a golden opportunity to be a good councilperson to your city, or you're risking having them take your place in a few years, because these people are here to stay. And I'm sure this is not just the novelty of coming to a city council, I'm really hopeful that's how city council is going to look like for a while, and I know for a fact that there are several people who are putting a lot of effort to talk to you, and that they deserve to be listened to. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, I think that's it then. All right, well, thank you, folks. So was there, and I don't think there was anyone else or came in late that was on a different subject, they needed to talk about this in the public. Okay, all right, thank you. Council, so with our routine business this evening, we have an adoption of the consent calendar, but I need you to pull off June 14th minutes. Mary had mentioned there was some other changes that need to be done to these minutes, so you would be approving 1A and 2.
I have a question on item 2, so I'll make a motion that item 1A be approved. Second?
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Okay, all right. Bill, item 2.
So I was just curious on the particulars on that. I didn't understand, it looked like it was a city street that we're going to dedicate the right of way to ourselves.
Yeah, I, I can try to answer, answer your question. So, so if council were to go out and stand on the property, it's going to look like a fully improved street, when actually... when actually it's city-owned property. It's property that the city acquired years and years ago, but it was never converted to right-of-way. This particular property provides access to Sunrise School, Sunrise Park, and then there's a number of lots on the west side. What prompted staff to come to council requesting this dedication is the Parks Department is working with the school district. They're going to be making improvements to Sunrise Park, which includes construction of a new parking lot. And so we just thought it was timely to clean this up. The other thing is the homeowners on the west side, if a title company ever looked into it, they may be concerned that the properties don't in fact have access to a public street. So we wanted to get it cleaned up for that reason as well.
Okay. So if I'll make a motion to approve item number 2 of the consent.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, next, council, you have an award of a contract. This is in a resolution that's on page 25. This is over the National Photocopy Corporation copier services. You had this item discussed on Monday. Review the contract.
I'll make a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, next is award a bid. This is line and Ellsworth sewer improvements. And Stacy, is that your item?
It is. So staff is recommending council award a contract to K&amp;R Plumbing Construction of Clathamas, Oregon for the Lyon and Ellsworth Sewer Improvement Project. We received three bids for the project, ranging from the low bid up to $363,000. The project's going to rehabilitate approximately 1,200 feet of existing eight-inch sewer main using pipe bursting, which is a trenchless construction method. Staff is recommending that these pipes get improved now because while they can be rehabilitated with trenchless construction methods, the manholes and sewer services on the line can't. And they lie underneath Lyon and Ellsworth. ODOT's planning to come in after the Cara Streetscape Project and pave Lyon and Ellsworth. So we want to improve the lines now to avoid cutting the pavement once it's been improved. And the project is estimated to be under budget, and so we are recommending council approve this contract award.
Move to approve.
Okay. All right, any discussion?
Just one, a process question. You know, over the years, this is exactly the process that we use, and we always take the lowest bid. Historically, there's probably over time been more than one change order that's come in on a lot of these contracts. Do we have any kind of a pattern? Do the change orders ever amount in total over time that in fact they went over, appreciably over with the amount bid? Like, it might have been an intentional low bid just to get the contract to... I'm being cynical, I know it might be that as it may.
I would have to do some research. I mean, there are...
There are companies that do that.
Yeah, there are contractors that do that. Often, their bids will look funny, and so we can... They'll look unbalanced compared to other bids that we get, and so we can have conversations with them before the award. But it does happen.
Okay.
Well, the city's had a contractor with that MO that we've all heard about, and it's not unique to the city of Albany for that contract. The answer is yes. I had a question, Stacy. I was a little surprised that Emery &amp; Sons' bid was so high.
Yeah.
Being that they're here in town, did they just have their hands full? Or do you know?
We were very surprised because they had expressed they were going to go after that project aggressively. But K&amp;R Plumbing, as well as done a lot of our trenchless construction in the city, I have not talked with their superintendent or their estimator to see what happened. But it could be that they're just spread too thin. Everybody's very busy right now.
Yeah, all three of those bidders bid more than what you estimated it was going to cost, too. I was surprised Emery &amp; Sons was so high.
We were as well.
Significantly higher.
Yeah.
And that's partly due, I'm sure, to the fact that everybody's busy. You know, there's a strategy involved when you're bidding some of these things. And one of the things you look at is, you know, do I have the people? Do I have the equipment? And a lot of times, you know what? I can rent some equipment, I can get some more guys. They're not my best guys, it's going to take them longer. That's just part of doing business. You know, it's not a case of somebody... I'd like to leave. It's not a case of a contractor trying to rip somebody off. It's just that you've got to be realistic when you're looking at your costs to do a job like that.
Did you put some time limits on these that you've got to get done by a certain time?
This project does have a, has a strict timeline just because the improvements need to be completed prior to ODOT coming in and doing the overlay. Otherwise, when we bid projects this time of year, we like to provide a more flexible construction window because we know that contractors are busy.
Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next is, thank you, Stacy. This is the approval of funding request, and this is for Parks and Recreation Department to accept a boating facility grant. And I can see Ed Hodney's in the back. I think he's even got a map back there.
Not for this one.
Oh, it's not for this one?
No.
Yeah. This is on page 31.
I think that this particular project and decision is pretty straightforward. You'll recall, we've had a couple of Marine, Oregon Marine Board grants recently. And the beauty of these grants is, once they've decided to support your project, they usually let you know before you even apply. And the percentage of the total project cost is very highly supported by the grant. So in this case, we're looking at about $150,000 project, and the grant will cover about 118 of that. And the rest of the project cost is going to be in-kind services provided by our folks. That's budgeted in the park maintenance budget. So it makes it a pretty simple project for us to pursue.
Okay. Any questions, Ed? All right, if not, there's a resolution on page 31.
Move to approve.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Ed. All right. Next is an intergovernmental agreement with ODOT for I-5 improvements. So who's taking the lead on that one, Stacy?
I'm covering for Ron tonight. This is staff recommending council by motion authorize the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with ODOT for preliminary engineering improvements for the project described as I-5, Saniam Highway, Viewcrest Drive. This project is included in ODOT's statewide transportation improvement program, the ODOT STIP. The engineering is for improvements to the Knox-Butte interchange, and it's going to include addition of northbound lane from Knox-Butte Onramp to the Viewcrest interchange, addition of a southbound on-ramp at Knox-Butte, north and southbound auxiliary lanes between Knox-Butte and Highway 20, and then also sound walls along portions of I-5 that are going to be identified during the preliminary design. Page 39 of the council packet, it's an attachment to the IGA. It provides an exhibit that identifies the improvements. If council chooses to authorize the mayor to sign this IGA, it will obligate the city to contribute $200,000 towards the preliminary engineering. I'll share that Lynn County has also agreed to contribute $200,000. And council, I think as far back as 2007, this item was brought up at a meeting and directed staff to send a letter... Either staff or the council to send a letter to ODOT where the city shared that they would contribute the funds. And we've held the funds as a contingency in the TSDC I fund since then.
Nothing has changed, in other words.
Nothing has changed.
I'm amazed how long that's been because, I mean, this was part of the I-5 interchange study that ODOT put me on that committee. And that's been a long time ago, so...
I think 10 years.
And then I know we appropriated the funds for it, and I can't believe it's finally we have an agreement.
Well, it just kind of shows...
It took a while.
With the big transportation, $25 million funding package, how long it's going to take for these things to actually come to fruition.
Exactly. Yeah. This has to been, I don't know, eight years ago maybe in the works, but yeah. Wow. Okay, council, so the agreement is on page 33.
Move to authorize.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you, Stacy. Next, this one is just real easy. This is a report, and this is usually Marilyn handles this, but she's on vacation this week. But this would be giving the schedule for our November and December meetings so we can plan ahead. What we do is we adjust the meetings according to our charter. We have to have at least two meetings per month, which there's plenty scheduled here for the November and December. But it's just giving the holiday time around Thanksgiving and the holiday time around Christmas for the council and staff, so...
This is the same one we got the email on.
Yes, yes, it is. But you need to approve it.
Move to approve.
Second.
So does that work session on Monday, does that count as a real council meeting?
Yes, it would.
So I just see in both November and December there's potential dates that we need to determine.
I think those are placeholders in case there is some, you know, pressing business that needs to be taken care of.
Okay, so we don't need to pick one tonight?
No.
Okay.
Yeah. That's just a placeholder, and we've had to do that before. Okay, all right. I think there was a second. Was there on that motion? Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, all right. Thank you. Next, business from the council. Bill, did you have anything this evening?
I don't think anyone's here from the Human Relations Commission.
Nope, I don't see anyone.
I was hoping they'd be here tonight to tell us a little bit about Activity Sunday, Festival Latino, I believe. Is that this Sunday?
That is...
The 30th, yeah.
It is this Sunday from noon to 4:00. I will help out to man the table. That will be the display for our Community Development Commission. They were lacking some folks to help out, so I'll be there for that.
And it's down at Monte.
At Monte, yeah.
Thank you.
Plan on coming? Good food?
Yeah, I do.
And you're welcome to come...
Needed a little more information.
You're welcome to come sit at the table with me. Join me, yes. Okay, anything else, Bill?
No.
Okay, all right, Ed?
Did you want to say something?
All right, Rich?
I've got an Ataboy for Costco. I bought an iPad, and Jorge helped me set it up. And he told me, without fail, do not lose the... So I wrote it down on a piece of paper, and I stuck it in my pocket. Haven't... We set up my thumbprint. It works great. And then I went and visited my sister and changed shirts. And that shirt fell on the floor. And she, being a good sister, washed my shirt. So that number and that everything is gone. And so then I call Apple, and they say, "Oh gee, well, no." So I went to the Apple Store in Corvallis. "We can fix it." "Yes, we can." And they... Well, as it turned out, they couldn't. "You're going to have to call the Apple number." I called the Apple number. The people are in Bend. And he says, "Oh, yes, you do this, and all you have to do is just now just take a picture of the receipt from Costco and send it." "Okay." "What's the number?" "Well, no, you have to go online." "You go online, and it says, 'In order to get in there, you have to enter your Apple ID.'" So that doesn't work. So they say, "Well, in about three days, they're going to send you information." "Okay, great." Well, it turned out to be about 10 days, and they sent me a text. And if I can quote here, "Your Apple ID is now ready to be recovered. Go to apple.com/recover and enter your Apple ID to get started recovering your Apple ID." Now, this is going on, and there's five, six hours of time on the phone. And finally, I just had enough. So today, I took it back over to Costco, and Costco said, "We can fix that. Here's your money." And I now have a Samsung. So kudos to Costco and, well, frowns to Apple. That's all I have.
So why do you have the machine or your money back?
Well, I got the money back, and then I bought another machine that was about $200 less that was on sale. So, you know, maybe that five or six hours on the phone was worth it.
They call that a security feature.
They call that a stupidity feature. I mean, how can someone be so smart at making stuff and so dumb at trying to fix it? It just doesn't make any sense.
Okay, all right. Anything else? All right, Ray?
Yes, for all of you folks on the dais, you noticed a little black square with a circle in the center of it? Somebody asked what it was, and I said, "You'll have to wait until I'm starting to talk." Basically, that is a postal stamp. Came from the post office. You can buy them in sheets. And that is a picture of the eclipse. Well, that's what it looks like. And it's heat-sensitive. If you put your thumb on it or heat and let it sit there for quite a while, or, you know, 15, 20 seconds, something like that, all of a sudden, that eclipse changes, and it's now a full moon behind it because that's what makes the eclipse. It's from the post office. That's all I have.
So it is a real stamp?
I honestly don't know. It's one of their collector stamps, but it does not indicate on there. It doesn't say, so my...
It says forever. Yes, it is. Over the right-hand lower corner.
Oh, it is, it is. Yes, it is.
Yes, it says forever.
So mine doesn't work.
Yes, if you put your thumb on it, just hold it together.
I tried it. I think my hands are too cold.
That may be.
Me, too, Sharon.
So it is a valid stamp.
I think it only works on males. And not for females. Why is this black as can be?
Does it work for you either?
Mine lit up quick.
Oh, my gosh. And Sean did it. It worked on his thumb. So it's just only for males.
Well, you know, you don't have to, you don't have to just... You can put it on your cheek, something warmer.
Oh, that's funny. I guess, yeah, too must be too cold.
Is it a real stamp?
Okay.
Yeah, on male, on male, the bill to...
Thank you, Ray. This is really nice. We'll have to get some more of the forever stamps, but... Okay, I didn't have anything this evening. It's just I do have the Oregon Mayor's Conference that I will be attending this weekend. And we also have our River Rhythms. We've got three more weeks of it. Summer Sounds Monday will be the last Summer Sounds, and they are just as much attendance as our River Rhythms. They have been just fantastic this year for Monday nights. It's amazing, but...
I hear them at my house.
You hear them at, yeah. Oh, it was great. It was the Beach Boys the other night, the tribute band. And boy, it was a lot of fun and wonderful turnout, so...
So far, it's been good.
Yeah.
You know, directing traffic is, you know, it hasn't been too hot. The wind comes up just a little bit.
Yeah. We also have our congressional leaders are holding some town halls. Congressman DePozio's is going to be on August 3rd. And then I got word today for Senator Merkley's will be... Congressman DePozio's will be at the library. Senator Merkley will be at LBCC on August 7th. So they are going to be having a busy time here coming up. So you might want to get word out or attend those town halls. Okay, that's it. Peter?
Just one quick thing. The maps that Ed Hodney brought into the back of the room, they're for reference for you that, to show you Timber Ridge in case you don't know where Timber Ridge is, which you refer to commonly as the Brandis property. And earlier this summer, the council directed staff to initiate a process to solicit interest in sale and development of the property. And Ed is preparing to draft and issue an RFP by the first week in August. And key requirements of, of any response to that RFP would include a proposed purchase price and a type of development that would be pursued. Proposals will be given thirty days to respond and after that, the council will be briefed on the responses in executive session. And subject to the council's direction, we'll negotiate a tentative agreement with the preferred developer, hold the required public hearings and work toward a final sale as soon as practical.
So, so for the RFP then, how long are you going to allow?
Thirty days.
For thirty days. So, do you think that's enough in case there's somebody that does not know about this property that it gives them enough time to come up with the proposal? I would hope that we would have some proposals that it's not just looking at the land, but really looking at livability, what could be built in this area to really kind of enhance that neighborhood?
Well, so I guess the short response is thirty days, I think, is a sufficient amount of time if it's advertised appropriately and, and as many instruments as we can find. We can extend the advertisement period if you want. I'll go with whatever direction the council would like to go. I have been in conversation with several, I think six now, prospective proposers. So, there is interest and of course, some of you know that at least a couple of those developers, we've got some experience with already.
So, which area is it that they're proposing on?
Yes, I'm sorry. Let me pull this up and I'll be away from the mic. So, the blue is the Miles Brenner piece we've already discussed. So, Area One, Area Two, and Area Three are three areas or they're not really parcels, but areas that we're soliciting proposals on right now.
So, you may get bids on one, two, or three of them?
It's all apart. I know, for example, that one of the developers has expressed an interest. He's only interested in this piece. Another developer that I've had a conversation with is interested in all three, so we just don't know quite what we're going to get. So, it's an all apart and we're going to reserve the right for the council to reject any and all proposals. So, we'll have maximum flexibility depending on your, your designs.
And so, are, so what are you going to put down for the criteria for their proposals? Are you going to be kind of, you know, having them show sort of like a conceptual plan for the area? Or is it just only going to be dollar sizes?
So, so we're going to need a graphic representation of what they propose to do. So, if they're interested in all or one of the areas, we'll, we'll be asking for, again, a graphic representation. We're not going to be asking for a design because they're not going to want to invest that much time and energy in it if they don't get, you know, get the chance. So, price is something that we'll solicit from them. We'll solicit the type of development, making sure that that development that they're proposing is consistent with the objectives of the city, including land use and zoning. We're definitely going to be interested in, you know, what kind of market they're, they're trying to hit. So, a fairly short list of criteria would include those, things that we're looking for them to be responsive to. We're hoping, I'm, I'm hoping to set up enough criteria, broad range and scope of criteria for you to be able to pick and choose from. And again, we can accept or reject any or all part of any proposal and even all proposals if, if that's your desire. You have, you should have maximum flexibility when we put it down on the street.
Okay, good. Okay, questions? All right. Counsel, okay, proceeding forward?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ed. Anything else, Peter?
Nothing. Thank you.
That's it, okay. Staff, have anything else? All right. Okay, so our next meeting is a work session. This is August seventh and our regular session will be August ninth. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you.